We're going to call an order to a regular reading of the Moni Village Board. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands a one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Here.
Gray.
Mayor Holston, present.
Horn.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
And Raisik.
Run.
You want to do that one more time just so it's all present. All present. There you go. At this point, we'll go to open to the public agenda items only. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Come to the podium, give your name and address, please. Okay. What's that? You just did. Is there somebody here?
I don't know.
No, sir. Thank you, pray for David. David, you can pray for all of us, that'd be great. No takers are open to the public. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Who would?
Sorry. I'd like discussion on that.
We have Holston and we have Gray. Okay. Yes, sir.
Item on the new business, number one, that was, I made my comment when it was open to the public, and that doesn't really explain what I said. I spoke about the unavailability of getting packaged, packets from the village.
Good.
I didn't just speak about the packets. I think it should-
My job as a clerk is not to be a court reporter and announce to give indication of what maybe, what transpired in the meeting.
We can-
It's not what transpired, sir.
So, item M. Just for clarification, it would be, I think it would probably be appropriate to have the sentence regarding Pop and Holston and Ms. Gabriel moved to open to the public, if that would be acceptable.
But I wanted to reword it, too. My point was they were not available.
Okay. Trustee Pop, if we're going to get into formalities, and I really don't want to-
It's not a formality, sir. It's to let the public know things that are going on.
Okay. Trustee Pop, pertaining to the way the agenda is drafted, and it has been for quite some time, any items to be removed should be stated to the clerk by the calling of a meeting to order. If you would like us to consider having this changed, that's not a problem. I believe, when it's under the board, obviously that can be done. That part is what I refer to as a formality. I'm not debating whether or not you said more than what was documented or not. According to Roberts' rules and the understanding that I have in the counsel is reviewed, simply put, the point of minutes is not to give a verbatim discussion of what took place, but simply to identify the generalities and any action that may have been taken. That being said, the clerk's notes are not inaccurate, other than they're in the wrong location on the items. Admittedly, they probably should be under open to the public, because that's where they did transpire.
Well, I totally disagree with your response, Mayor.
That's fine.
And I think it should be put in there. I think the people should know. They have, these are released to the public. I think they should know exactly what happened.
If I may remind you, trustee Pop, in the past, you've been frustrated when the notes taken by the clerk were very precise, and they detailed things that were said that you were not appreciative of. So, he had taken under advisement and simplified after review with counsel, the methodology and the requirements for taking of minutes, and as such, minutes have been simplified as requested by the trustees at that time.
So, you didn't have to change them?
I didn't say that.
Oh.
I didn't say that. Well, right now, we have a motion and we have a second.
Can I amend my motion?
Certainly.
I just want to amend it to the, as we just previously discussed, that section M should have been open to the public. The comments were made, so, to change it to that, just-
Understood.
With the proper conversation, because we've had this conversation before where you see the minutes, it says, "Discussion ensued." Yet if I'm, if, just hang on, please, if I'm somebody who, two months from now, looks at our meeting tonight and says, "What was the discussion?", it's not there.
Understood.
You can see on WPAL, they can play on the notes.
I'm sorry, I'm talking, please.
How am I going to say this? Because my job is not to be a court reporter.
No, I understand that.
I'm not taking things verbatim. I'm not taking every word.
I understand that.
As the mayor just said in the past, when I wasn't a little more specific, there were people taking offense to that. So, we're trying to go along with the program and get back to the description of the job.
I understand that you cannot get word for word. But if there's a long discussion, when it says, "Discussion ensued," even if you hit the highlights of that discussion, I understand that. You can't do it. Our reports are recorded. I understand that. I'm not looking for word for word, but the facts are the facts.
So, if I may, to call the situation here, if that's possible. Trustee Holston, you put the request out there to amend the latter three-
The comments made in section M should have been lifted up again, that's all.
Except for the first, yeah, actually, you're right, all, I believe, all of those. If I may request that you also submit the request here, since you have the motion on the table to deal with this, to simply identify-
Without getting into that?
Without getting into the verbatim aspect of this, simply state that trustee Pop spoke of the lack of availability or accessibility of packets at the village hall.
I'm okay with that. Get the meeting up.
Can I ask for the attorney's opinion? Because he really looks like he wants to hear this.
Can I? If I may, Mayor.
Yeah, please.
I believe the village clerk is correct. Minutes are supposed to be distinct, which they are. And sometimes there are issues with respect to the wording. The more accurate record would be the WPAL, or the recording. I've seen minutes where the, it was a two-hour meeting, and obviously, a discussion ensued relative to the merits of a bond, as whatever the case may be. Mayor and trustee Holston are correct. It should be, I believe, probably open to the public. But the minutes are supposed to be sustained, just to give the general public what the discussion took about, took place about, but overall, it's not supposed to be verbatim. So, we change the portion of the minutes to reflect under open to the public, I think that's probably appropriate.
Call the question.
We have a motion, I believe, trustee Gray, you have the second initially. Do you resecond the-
Yes. Yes. Yes.
So, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any more discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
No.
Raisik?
Yes.
And Gonzalez?
Yes.
On this report, if you don't mind, Mr. Administrator, at this point, we were looking to go to executive session, is that correct, sir? Okay. We had it on the agenda to go to executive session later in the meeting, but we have some individuals that are here that were trying to accommodate what we've done in the past. So, we could, before we get to the clerk's report, simply jump ahead to item O under, for executive session, specifically pertaining to section 2C, I'm sorry, section 2C1, personnel, section 2C3, appointment of officials, officers, I think would be, either one of those or both would be appropriate.
To the, yes, sir.
And if, so, I would like somebody to make a motion to go to executive session.
Make that motion. Second.
Gray and Raisik. Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
6:53, sir. Okay, the night, time is now 7:50 on January 11th, 2017. Returning from, I'm sorry, Jan- January 25th. Sorry about that. Thank you for the question. Returning from executive session, roll call, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Present.
Horn?
Here.
And Pop?
Yes.
At this point, we turn to the clerk's report.
I have no reports.
Okay. Under the mayor's report, we have the appointment of a new police chief. Recommending for appointment Scott Kerner for the position of police chief. I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll entertain that motion. Second.
Raisik and Holston. Roll call.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Present.
And Raisik?
Yes.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Yes.
So, I know we made the motion in two, and I know, and we talked about this in the meeting, I have been, or was very vocal about that reservation, and the timing and everything, and understanding, and having the chance to speak to Mr. Kerner. I believe we are doing the right thing in this vote, by having him at the house.
I believe appropriate with the appointment would also be to be swearing in. Mr. Clerk, would you mind doing the honors?
The honors.
Scott, if you'd please join us, and Mr. Pearson, why don't you come up?
I'll be camouflaged. I'll give you a copy, see if I can-
You're not supposed to go with them.
I, Scott Kerner, do solemn swear.
I, Scott Kerner, do solemn swear. And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties as police chief.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties as police chief.
To the village of Moni, to the best of my ability.
To the village of Moni, to the best of my ability.
I surrender.
I got to tell you, I haven't known Scott, but just through the interview process, and it was, it's kind of touching, actually, to get a glimpse of the man who's going to be wearing that badge and representing us. And Scott, thank you. Trustees, thank you. At this point, we're going to, the second item under the mayor's report, and it has to do with the discussion approval of an intergovernmental agreement regarding the Lareway Dispatch Center. This has been a, I won't even say a waiver of law, it's probably anything but that. The State of Illinois has mandated a consolidation of units of government, well, not so much mandated unit, government consolidation, they admonished that, if you will, in some cases, which in this particular case, as it relates to the dispatch centers, they have stipulated a reduction by approximately half per region. Will County was in a situation where, I believe they had, what, six? They had reduced to three. And EastCom, which is 16 jurisdictions, I believe, has been frankly, the most efficient of all of the dispatch centers, cost efficient and such, and frankly, I got to tell you, hats off to Mayor Mike Einhorn from Crete. He is, that has been a labor of love for Mayor Einhorn, and he's been with that, working hard on behalf of making sure the fiscal responsibility and everything that needs to take place there in the dispatch area. And so, when the consolidation mandate came down, we were looking for every reason to maintain what we've been doing, which is already larger as far as the number of agencies that were involved than other dispatch centers. Unfortunately, the county was not so inclined to request the waiver. We are then in a situation where we had no choice but to work on a inter-agency agreement that was going to be much larger than what we currently have. The current layout, I believe it was 30, maybe 31 agencies. It was not an easy migration to that point. EastCom liked EastCom, Lincolnway liked Lincolnway. Each had their own preferences and personalities and everything else at play, and you think our meetings are rough. You should have seen some of their meetings. And I commend everybody involved for taking the steps necessary to represent and seek to attain the best for all of our communities. I'm not so sure that the consolidation is really ultimately the best, but when we have no choice because of the state mandate, that's what we're faced with. So, I believe the majority, if not all, of the EastCom area, especially the Will County portion of that, just so you know, we actually have, and our dispatch center goes all the way into South Heights. So, there are a number of agencies that are part of our dispatch center currently that are not even in Will County. But I believe the majority of those, especially the Will County ones, are going to be part of the Lareway consolidation effort. That is going to be everybody that was Lincolnway previously, the New Lennox, Frankfurt area, everybody that was EastCom before, which is eastern Will County, a little bit of the southern, southeastern Cook, and then as well as the sheriffs, and Romeo, who, is Braywood possibly going to be in? Okay. Anyhow, there's a list, although it was an intergovernmental agreement he has received two weeks ago. I'm not trying to longer this, linger this, if you will, but there's a lot going into it, and frankly, what we're at is the best that we can do. Mike, I'm sorry, Mayor Einhorn managed to put it together in such a way that it's going to, on paper, it looks to, and we're still questioning the confidence of those numbers, but it looks like it's going to cost us roughly the same as what it's been costing us in the past, based on the matrix of numbering and billing rates and everything else, and the way it's going to be represented. It will be an awkward evening together, so to speak, but, you know, so, I felt like the need to give you publicly a little bit of background on what's gone into this. I don't know if you have any questions before we actually take a vote on this. They just gave us supposedly the final of this earlier this month. I want to give you guys time to read it. However, they need our answer by the end of January, or we don't necessarily have the same voting capacity. What I would suggest and would request is the recommendation for a motion on this. I talked to Mayor Einhorn about this, and I believe the fire department was implementing a similar authority, and that was the approval of the intergovernmental agreement as presented, with marginal latitude, as directed by council, to work through any last-minute anomalies, so that we can meet the expectation, yet, you know, we're getting the meat of it, but if there's some nuances that are still being worked out, that we don't have to, you know, not be eligible for the other issues. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for Moni to be a part of the 31 agencies of the Lareway Dispatch Center, with the allowance for, under council's advice, to make some marginal adjustments.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Gray and Raisik. Any discussion?
Marginal adjustments to wording or phrase?
It's going to be consistent for all the agencies, so we're not going to come up with something that's unique to Moni. It's just going to be a matter of whether it's-
One of the largest unknowns is debt. So, what ETSB or 911 center is going to bring debt, and would the other municipalities incur that debt? So, that's the unknown, and that's why the EastCom just feels uncomfortable with the way it's worded now. So, that would be the caveat, is just that we're not going to incur someone else's debt.
Right. Because currently, EastCom is, their balance sheet is positive, and we want to make sure that we're not dealing with somebody else's negative in the process. So, and that's part of the issue also, there's going to be some, EastCom is technically going to still continue to exist because it has some assets, if you will, for control-related issues of the towers and all that kind of stuff, so there's going to be some things that are going to have to be worked through and all that. And some of that integration of those pieces has to be addressed, probably in the intergovernmental agreement or a subsequent article that may need to come back before the board, but we just, I want to make sure that there's some latitude for the councils, for each agency to have some tweaking and building necessary.
And then for clarity's sake, incurring debt, you know, municipalities are shouldering all of the costs of this. This never will triple down to tax payers.
Well, the whole mechanism for funding of this is, I mean, there's, Ruben, you can probably address it, but some of it is off of the, ETSBs are actually funded in part by the taxes on your cell phone bills and things of that sort. There's some monies that go to them that way. But also, the local funding is based on activity. So, if our department is actually, in our case, we only have the police department, we don't have the fire, the fire district is separate, so they have their own agreement that they'll be dealing with. But the funding formula for this has a matrix based on the population, size of the agency, the community that's being represented, based on the number of call activity and things like that, and that's recalibrated each year, is how that works. So, it's not disproportionate to the amount of burden that's placed on the dispatch truck. So, that's, I mean, that's a very summary of what it's doing with this. So, the taxpayer issues, yes, we are funding it.
Municipality is, you know, it's never, other than cell phone use.
Correct. We're funding it through our general funds.
General funds.
Correct. And there's a portion of that as part of our regular budget. And our goal is to make sure that the new dispatch center is as well managed as the former EastCom dispatch center, so that that doesn't raise, go up anymore. But there is some question, because when you put all that together, you don't have necessarily the benefit of that growth factor. Doug?
Just, the alternative to voting this down would be giving setup our own, but then you've got cost incurred with that.
We're not allowed to.
Not allowed?
Legally, we're not allowed. Yeah, the only other, the only, the only other choice we have, and trust me, I, I mean, you don't have to trust me, call Mike Einhorn, you can ask him. Other options we're looked at, you know, WestCom, SouthCom, you know, Joliet, PD, every one of those is actually more expensive than this option.
Okay.
And we'd have less buy-in and influence on it than we do with this. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez? Yes.
Thank you. At our last meeting, we had a presentation from Azovar Audit Services, not to be confused with the, Daryl Whitley?
Whitley, yes.
Yeah, that's our regular audit services. There was a presentation made by Azovar, which is a, basically, they're a revenue forensic auditing service that they go through and identify funds that we should be receiving by state law, available for, the case may be, and we are not currently receiving those funds, and we're either leaving them on the table, or the case may be, and we're not benefiting from something that, it brings equality to the formula where, you know, if we're all abiding by the same rules and laws and everything else, then everybody's share should be the same, and in some cases, if it's not being collected, it's not being remitted to our village, or it's being remitted to a different village instead of ours, or something of that sort, those are the things you're going to identify. So, presentation was made. There's an opportunity to move forward with that. I would like direction from the board. We don't actually have a document in front of us, so I'm not necessarily asking for, I'm not asking for a vote necessarily to sign an agreement at this point, but I would like the direction of the board as to whether we should request an agreement be prepared.
If I may, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just a reminder, there was a cost of two bucks. I don't know, you're already a dollar's sandwich.
Right.
So, it seems like a win-win.
So, I will take a roll call, just to give me proper direction, so Daryl can-
Question?
Yes, sir.
Has this been recommended by the finance, by the finance, by our finance director?
I believe Doug, it was actually presented at the last meeting, at Doug's request from talking to Daryl as well. So, I'm sorry, did we have a motion? No. Do we have any more discussion? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Pop? Somebody want a second?
Thank you.
Raisik? Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, I'm on the agenda pertaining to committee of the whole. Please, if you have any items that you want to have pertaining to committee of the whole for the first meeting in February, please give those to myself or Ruben within the next week, so we make sure that we are addressing those items, and so whether we, so we know whether or not to schedule the committee. Yes, sir.
Previously, at the last meeting, asked for you to put the TIF on there. Wasn't it a bit, I asked for the TIF to be put on the committee on the whole?
Okay. Understood. We'll just, David, let me know specifically what you're looking for, to make sure we absolutely can address that. Mr. Clerk, you got it. All right. If anything else, if something comes up for you, want to have something addressed at the committee of the whole for February 8th? Just give that to myself and the administrator. Nothing further in my report. Mr. Batista?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. For the sake of time, I'm going to go through this rather quickly. Just as a reminder, TIF meetings, we talked about last time, we did have the Friday, the 21st meeting, that was at 2:00, and that was for the review board hearing for the taxing bodies. It was at 2:00. I know there was some question, why did we pick 2:00? And just to, to let the board know, that was in response to, courtesy to the taxing bodies. Typically, they're working a nine to five business hours, and so to accommodate their schedules, we had scheduled that meeting for 2:00. The next meeting is- The next meeting is, which you probably have received some calls with public notice at one ounce, the next meeting is Tuesday, January 31st, and it's at 6:00 p.m. And that will be here, Park Building, and that will be a hearing open to the public and has to receive comments about the proposed TIF 5 district. So.
Usually, kind of, it's kind of like when we had the roundabout discussion in the military from Parker, it'll be of that format.
What time?
That's at 6:00 p.m. 6:00 p.m. here at the Park Building. In any event, any of the residents make mention that they're not able to make that meeting, please advise them that they can submit their comments as well, and we will make sure that those comments are entered into record. And then the following meeting is Wednesday, February 22nd, and it's will be during the board meeting. And that is scheduled during a board meeting, a public hearing, is related to the proposed TIF 5 district, and a copy will be on file here during the meeting. So if anyone wants to come in from the public and to review the file, the clerk will have that in his possession, he can review it with. Next item on my report is just to give the board an update on the progress of the boardroom, that things are moving along, that you've taken a peek. You can see that the flooring has been laid, the new drywall is in, it's been painted. And this upcoming week, they're going to continue with the wiring, the concrete work has been done, the conduit's been laid, and now this will be the wiring, the technology being placed in. And as we move into next week, the drop ceiling will be addressed, and hopefully, by the end of next week, we'll have the cabinets and the conference table in place. And we're hoping by the February 8th meeting that we're able to use the boardroom at that time. There will be a few things that have to be addressed that are on, are on order, we probably will be missing some doors and some trim, but the room will be functional. So the goal is to have our February meeting back in the boardroom. And with that, that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Can I ask, now, should I bring it up a little bit?
You can, you can.
Going along the same lines there, where we had talked at the last meeting and in the previous.
Is your mic on? I'm sorry.
[inaudible]
Go tap on, I'll see. Yeah, it's also.
We talked about it at both previous meetings, too, that I know in the November meeting, we only had one meeting November, one meeting December. When we first found out about it, we gave, as a board, the approval to go ahead with the construction or reconstruction of the boardroom. But to that date, and we had suggested even in December, us as a board, we gave approval to move ahead, but still have not seen total numbers or contracts from this. We talked about it the last meeting again, that I thought was supposed to be on today's agenda, that we should have a resolution or something drawn up by our attorney, that the board gives us approval to spend this amount of much on that boardroom, not to exceed such and such a cost. Because that, you know, we still don't know, and we had another presentation last, you know, last week or last month about the cameras and everything that are going to be out there. We still don't even have a proposal in front of us for that. And we don't want to go over budget, or what we said to go ahead, you know, from a yellow tablet piece of paper, which you drew up for us, that was proposed cost. But we still have not seen anything. I would feel really comfortable to have a resolution or something drawn up. So we say, as a board, that, yeah, we can go ahead with this and not to exceed this amount of money.
Okay. I will have it, there was a proposal that was submitted, I believe, in the December in the packet, but I will make sure that we've got it, that you have it in your possession.
Especially if we're revising, you know, circuitry or whatever, we should have five online, but it's not going to go above.
You know, there's still a lot of drill fun for it.
Yes.
And what I assume, Heidi, bad word, but you're talking about, as they say, construction turned the key, we're there. We're talking cameras, we're talking computers, furniture, everything, walk in and sit out.
And not that we need to see nine different proposals, but that we, as a board, say.
Total cost.
Total cost. We are not going to go above this. So we have to turn back the surveillance or whatever, the cameras, we just want to know what it's going to cost us.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Anybody else? All right. Pope?
Sorry, and thanks.
I'm sorry?
I said, sorry and thanks.
No, that's fine. No, actually, we're official. Right, all right, we're up to official report. We're juggling. Officials report for Public Works, trustee.
Two things this evening. One, I didn't speak about last time, but the Public Works has done their water main installation on the Gibson Trail in accordance with Aqua. All that has been complete, even though Gibson Trail looks like it's still a bit torn up, and MJ, MJ is out there still working. The underground water mains have been set and have been connected together in accordance with Aqua. That has completed this week. Also, too, our superintendent, Dave Grisell, along with Ruben, got a grant at end of last year, middle of last year, for LED lighting. Those are now going in. Route 50 is done, the fairgrounds are done, and also Eagle Fair is done, and weather permitting, the rest of McTominay will be done. But again, the LED lighting is being in place, and actually, social media has noticed it, too, and I've seen some things out there that they actually like the improvements in the lights, and obviously, the LED is going to last longer and save the village dollars. So, yeah, exactly. For once, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
A little wind.
Yeah, exactly, a little bit, so, end of report, thank you.
May I make, ask DJ a question on the time we're going on? Mr. Gray? I knew you'd say that, that's why I asked you. DJ, I haven't had an egg smell for a long time in my water.
Put your right hand.
Way down. I know you can't flush, you don't flush too much in the winter, I noticed. And I know they've been digging like crazy, so that's what's causing it, you think? You tell me, I don't know.
In your home, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I can look into it. There's numerous factors.
Not in my house, I don't want you to look into it, but I just mean.
He's a hot water tank, he talks about that.
Oh, okay. Could be tired. It's almost as old as we. There you go.
Parks and Recreation, trustee Gonzalez.
We have one item tonight, just to, for our 55 and older residents, we have Monday, February 6th, at noon, at Frank G's, we're having a pizza and salad lunch for $10 or $15 per couple, and a couple is two people, it doesn't have to be married couple. And we also have, beyond the lunch, is also Rick Sostito, who knows to be our Elvis tribute artist, will be performing.
55 and over 55.
Oh, and if you, you can purchase tickets in advance before Friday, February 3rd, at Village Hall. Thank you very much. This is important.
All right. Just to follow that, just to remind everybody, Mary Jo Vincent has done a phenomenal job leading our Parks and Rec department. She's been with us a couple of years now and helped us to take it to a new level than what we had experienced before. I don't have the exact date, but I believe it's the first week of April, it's going to be her last. We are taking resumes for anybody who might be interested in the Parks and Recreation position. As with every other position, everything's evolving, so please submit your recommendations for that. Thank you. Finance, trustee Horn.
No report today.
Business development, trustee.
We don't have enough time tonight for me to give you everything that was given to me by economic development director Kevin, but I do want to go through a couple of things. Amazon apparently is going to begin their hiring process this next summer. They expect to employ 2,500 full-time employees by March of 2018.
May.
This is March.
Okay. March, May, whatever. I'm sorry.
They're a third-party company to do the initial onboarding and HR management for Amazon, Integrity Staffing Solutions is that company. And I'm sure Kevin can give anybody in the public information on that if they're interested. I do know the starting wage over there is $13 now for what they refer to as tier-one employees, along with some good benefits, et cetera. Dollar General is on, is, I believe, on step two, opening in February?
I believe so.
I think so. That's, if I seize it, although they've been working literally seven days a week. So we're looking forward to that. And there is a prospective redevelopment project that's being run, they're sort of right now, and I don't have any more specific information on that in the report.
Thank you. Building services, trustee Horn.
Dollar General is right on schedule. They're looking at, February 14th yet. The inspection's passed, and they're reporting a sidewalk across the front and the side of the building. All the inspections passed, the electrical, drywall, plumbing, everything. Amazon just, boy, they really, the company pushes, I'll tell you that. There's no messing around with them. That thing is moving wonderfully, their phase three structural is field, erection is in progress. David, how many phases are there? Do you know?
Too many, no.
Too many to tell, whatever. They're moving along. I didn't know what phase three meant, so. Metal studing speed for framing the offices and door frames, they're hanging and finishing drywall and painting, plumbing, rough ins done. Valley Ridge Dock Edition is beginning their second phase for adding the main doors, so the rough electrical and pre-core inspection passed. And building inspections up to date were 15. End of report.
Okay, thank you. Larry, it's your turn. Oh, sorry. Oh, did I miss one? I'm sorry, public, I believe probably do, yeah. I don't know, I see your order, red shirt there. Public safety, public safety with trustee Raisik.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor.
Really? All right, whatever. We had something on the agenda for possible approval, the ordinance for flagpole issues. Further review of the matter, at this point, I believe, if the, we can discuss it further, but I believe that there's relevance in making an adjustment, it's simply a big matter of especially, all right, sorry, grants, which would go through finance own. And so, Larry, I don't believe we see everything else in your book. Next on the agenda, old business, anything on your old business?
Question about the fire engine that we discussed a few months ago, what's the status of that?
I have not yet received a letter. Larry, have you received a letter from council yet? Aaron?
Let me check on trustee Holston, I believe, I'll check.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe there has been, but he doesn't want to release it until further information. And it's, I think we'll be able to discuss it probably further at the second board meeting in February. But there has been, we've had contact with the fire district's attorney, and I believe, I'll check the file, but I believe there was some correspondence, but at this point in time, he's asked not to release it until there's further clarification.
Okay. Thank you. And just so everybody remembers, the, what trustee Holston was referring to there, we had stipulated the intent to be supported over a fire district and assisting with the acquisition under certain criteria, and one of those was they provided a letter from their board and validated, if you will, from their council. Anyhow, anything on your old business besides that? New business? Okay. Open to the public, non-agenda items, if you would be so kind as to come to the podium, give your name and address, and leave your comments in three minutes, and we'll try to be nice. [inaudible].
Tulsa, Frikowski, 5686 West Roosevelt Street. Just following up on, if you had a chance to talk to the board about the ordinance changing in business license.
No, sir, I apologize. This is the first meeting we've had since then. I'll give the board, with the mayor's permission, a memo as to what we discussed, me, myself, and your attorney, and then at the next board meeting, they might be able to take action on it.
Okay, and the next board meeting is?
February 8th.
Okay, I saw that there was like two a month, but I noticed it because of the holidays.
Typically, it's the second and fourth.
Right. It's February 8th on that?
You're patient.
You're not being patient.
No, I understand. I'll, I'll call her again. Your attorney's very thorough, very knowledgeable. I'll hold a phone call, I will call her, and I'll, in that time, I'll present a memo to the mayor and to the board for their information, what our discussions were, and I'll have it on, under my, the mayor's board permission, under my agenda for the February.
8th. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If you would, if you'd like, Larry, depending on the, what the dialogue is on that, I'm
assuming you're going to have his counsel identified on that, so he'll, he'll let your counsel know through conversation directly with her, whether you're ready for something for board.
I'm a little negative, I'm a little late, but I kind of told him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I don't believe we have any reason to go into executive session. All right, we covered all those bases. No, the time is now 8:26. Understand a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Raisik and Horn? Roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Gray?
Yes. Holston? Question?
[inaudible].